All right, thank you. We stay away from international figures. But you're right, that's a... All right. First item up after the pledge is Wednesday's Pet as presented by former First Selectman, Sherri Stenick. And thank you for your patience, Sherri.
Okay, this is Leroy, and he is between six months and a year old. He's very sweet and gentle, and he is looking for a new home as of Saturday. So if anybody is interested in a puppy, he's Parker Shepherd. Not really sure what else. Mixed breed, but very gentle, very sweet, and would be a great playmate for some kids. 211 One Ron Highway, Saturday.
Sherri, thank you. Are you still undefeated?
I think so.
Yes.
Yes, wow. Beautiful. Sherri, you've been doing this for almost two years now?
I think so.
And every dog you've come up here with has found a home.
Apparently.
And bunny, and...
Yeah, hats, the bunnies, and the burrs.
The burrs, that's right. You are multilingual in terms of...
Make care of them.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next up, you know, it's been a phenomenal Thanksgiving week and experience. There's been a lot of goodwill being shed around, and one of the things that we wanted to highlight is one of the efforts that has gone on and become a phenomenal fundraiser and doing good. It's known around town as Sticks for Soldiers. It's a nonprofit charity lacrosse tournament held in Fairfield to raise money in support of wounded troops. And what's amazing is this past week, there were 800 students involved. They raised $80,000. And that's just a tremendous amount of leadership, a tremendous amount of good that comes out of that. But, you know, what highlighted it to me was the fact that you got students involved. You got kids involved focusing early on giving back and kind of seeing the bigger picture. That it's not just about winning or losing, it's all the good that can come from that. So we have a series of proclamations here for Christopher Parisi, Michael Vukas, and Jim Thomas. Thomas, sorry. And gentlemen, if I could ask you to come up to the platform, is our tradition here that we can duly embarrass you in person? I'm not going to read each of three of these, but I did want to go through the first... Read at least one so that we can let everybody know kind of what's taking place. This is a proclamation from the town. "The town of Fairfield is proud to honor Christopher Parisi," and there's one for each of you. "Secretary of the Sticks for Soldiers, a nonprofit high school charity lacrosse tournament held in Fairfield, Connecticut to raise money for wounded troops. And whereas this is held on Thanksgiving Saturday, Sticks for Soldiers is sponsored by the Fairfield-Ludlow High School lacrosse team. The primary mission of this tournament is to provide support and give thanks to the servicemen and women who put their lives on the line for our country. And whereas the secondary objective is to create an awareness among high school athletes to the sacrifices being made by people just a few years older than themselves. Through their play and fundraising participation, the athletes demonstrate their tangible thanks and support. Determinate and related fundraising efforts have raised over $325,000 in just eight years with 2013's results..." Wow, $100,000 this year, and donations still being received. Congratulations, guys. Thank you. And if you'll let us, we would like to officially hand these to you. Put my colleagues here. Why don't we get you two guys in the middle? Kirsten and Kevin over here.
Sure, this is Chris. And Jim Thomans, and this is for Mike Vukas. Mike was the founder, he had the original idea back in 2006, and it's grown from there.
You're Mike's dad, right?
I'm Mike Thomans' dad, right. Thank you for coming to us.
Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I've got a... I know, exactly. I've got a couple of things for you, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Let me... If I can, I'm Jim Thomans, and Chris may say a few words as well. I also want to recognize Mike Vukas, who couldn't be here today. Mike was the founder of the tournament, also a volunteer dad back in 2006, who had a lightbulb that Chris Parisi supported early on to get our boys doing something in the offseason and try to make a difference. And it wouldn't happen without the kids, it certainly wouldn't happen without Chris Parisi driving it through the players. But as Mr. Tetra mentioned, we had actually over 850 students representing 56 teams from about 45 different towns in Connecticut participated on Saturday. And the number now is climbing over $100,000 this year. And we supported two individuals this year. Army Captain Ben Harrow and Sean Pesci, a local West Haven boy, who Sean was paralyzed and then lost his legs in an IED explosion last year. It was a monumental undertaking. We used some of the Fairfield facilities to play about 116 games among three different divisions. But again, I did want to recognize Mike Vukas for starting and Chris for supporting the effort all the way through. We started as... Set it up as a nonprofit last year, and I'm hitting that up with Chris. And then we just pull on all the volunteers from Fairfield to Fairfield Global Lacrosse Program to help us make it happen. Couple hundred volunteers for the day of the tournament. Chris, you want to say a few things?
Sure. As Jim passes out some of the things that we have for the selectmen, I just want to thank Mike Tetra and the rest of the board for recognizing us. We thank our Ludlow parents and Dave Schultz, Athletic Director of Ludlow, for all their support, without which we couldn't do this great project. I'm grateful for Mike Vukas for giving birth to this tournament, and Jim and Trish Thomans for chairing the event. Their monumental efforts, you know, really extraordinary this year. Most of all, I want to thank our honorees, Ben Harrow and Sean Pesci, and all of our past and future beneficiaries. We plan to do this for another eight years, if not more, God willing. And to all here, we accept this responsibility with open arms and humble hearts, knowing full well that we can never equal the service that our active-duty military forces provide on a daily basis. On behalf of all Connecticut lacrosse programs, Fairfield-Ludlow is proud to honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just before you go, Kevin, Kristen, did either of you want to share any comments?
I just wanted to say...
Come here.
I just want to say thank you for this awesome effort and this leadership that you have shown. The money you have raised is going to some great causes and some wonderful people who have served our country, have protected us, and we're also very proud of you and grateful for what you've done. Thank you.
And I'd like to echo that, and thank you for not only teaching and coaching our young people, but modeling for them how to give back and to serve in your own ways, as we have been given the gift of the service of our military men and women. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have for each of you a t-shirt from this year with the names of all the teams that participated on the back. And gentlemen, forgive me, we seem to have overbought the extra large, so they will shrink for you.
Thank you.
Kristen, I have for you as well.
I've found that if you buy bigger t-shirts, you don't have to go on a diet.
And one thing we've done over the years, we've raised a fair amount of money from these commemorative wristbands. So on behalf of the four years that we've been fundraising for individual soldiers, a copy of the commemorative wristband. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amazing. All right. Now, we have some additional special guests here today. I'd like to recognize Representative Kupchak and Representative Wong. And I guess Ed Bowman, you should probably take the stand, as it were, at the same time.
Well, I think for us to follow what just happened is a tough act to follow, but it really reflects what a wonderful community we have, and not only in regards to charitable giving, but also the fact that we are on the forefront of environmental awareness. And what we're able... Representative Kupchak and I were able to represent the community up in Hartford in receiving an award from the Clean Energy Organization in the state to recognize our town as one of the leaders in the state in regards to clean energy and environmental activism. And we were able to receive an award called the Bright Ideas Grant Award, which in no small part is due to the efforts of the Board of Selectmen as well as Ed Bowman, who wrote all the grants and initiated all the clean energy programs. A couple examples of the energy programs that were initiated was the ability to benchmark all the energy utilization in all the town buildings and schools. Another example was to really be on the forefront of initiating Earth Day, to be such a widespread community outreach. And an example of the successes we've been able to accomplish is the fact that we have been able to reduce carbon emissions that is equivalent to close to 1,700 cars being off the road. So it does make a difference in the little increments that we do. And this is an award of $15,000 that is awarded to the town of Fairfield from the Bright Ideas Grant. And we're proud, as state representatives, to receive it, but we're even happier to be able to present it to the town of Fairfield, because truly, you make this a wonderful place to live. And Ed, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Representative Kupchak?
I'll just say that I was really excited to get the email from you, I had to say that we had one. And actually, if you look at the booklet when we were up at the presentation, we got one of the larger ones. And obviously, I think we have Ed to thank for that. He does some really great work, you all know that already, and helps the town, he writes some awesome grants, and it pays off. So thank you, Ed, and thank you for allowing us to have an opportunity to present this today.
Well, thank you for bringing it back. And just so everybody's clear, Ed has obviously been a leader. He's been up for our board before, we get recognition for this. He's not only created a more sustainable Fairfield, but he saved taxpayer money in the process. And as much as he tries to shy away from the spotlight, and he did allow Tony and Brennan to pick up the plaque, Ed did bring back the check. So we do have the $15,000 in hand.
That's nice.
We'd love to have an opportunity to be able to present the plaque to the Board of Selectmen.
All right, you guys want to... First of all, do you have anything to say on top of this before we step up?
Go ahead, please.
I would just like to say, yes, Ed gets all the credit, as he deserves. And his... The town leadership is through people. It's people who are the leaders who helped bring these programs here, and Ed is a true leader, and thank you. You deserve all the credit.
Absolutely, and thank you for those words. And Ed, time and time again, you have come before boards and commissions and presented proactive, forward-thinking plans that keep us environmentally safe, make our town stronger and with a brighter future. And you always do it with so much charm and information that you bring to us. We can't thank you enough. It is a pleasure to work with you.
I just want to say one thing. None of this works without the support of the elected officials at the top. We've always had the elected official support, whether it's state or local, without that nothing we get done.
Thank you. Let's join our friends.
You're not leaving. You want to go off to the side, or?
Oh, we want to do this? You want to get on that side?
Yeah. Why don't you go in the middle? Ed, you're in the middle. There you go. Look at this.
Stuck in the middle again.
Hold up, do you want to...
Yep.
Well, actually, you know what? We should give it to Mike. We should present it to the First Selectman, actually.
Okay, here we go.
Here you go.
Good?
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity.
We'll find an appropriate place for it. Sorry.
Great job. Thank you for allowing us. And the check?
Yes.
The check came.
It's a long way to the end. I guess at this point, it would be appropriate to point out that our state delegation went the extra mile to save the town dollars by driving up to get the plaque and driving it back. All right. Let's see. Next up, we have a series of items here. I'll take these one item at a time. Item number six, there's some resignations, information only, from the Conservation Commission, Felicia Watson, who's resigned and we'll be hearing her name later. And then from the Land Acquisition Commission, Ian Van, unaffiliated of 1600 Kings Highway, and he's going to be moving to a full member. And Michael Widmer of 279 Brookside Drive, and he's going to be moving to a full member. Both Ian and Mike reside as alternates. Next up, we're going through a number of appointments, and I just want to point out that according to our charter, a lot of the terms for boards and commission end in November. So that creates a certain bottleneck of a lot of names coming through. So we've got a number of these to do kind of at year-end, right about now. Next up, First Selectman reappointments, and this is for information only. The Economic Development Commission, Maureen Abrahamson, Democrat, 278 Woodhouse Road, for a term of November 13 through November 18. Employees Retirement Board, and this one requires RTM approval. Michael Mears, Republican, 44 Bay H Court, for a term of November 13 to November 18. And Fair Housing Authority, Carol Lansman, Democrat, 41 Old Coach Road, for a term of November 13 through November 18. Next up are reappointments. I guess we'll take these one board at a time, if that's okay. These are going to need Board of Selectman approval. Okay. Reappointments. To hear, consider, and act upon the following reappointments. To the Affordable Housing Committee, Richard Gribko, Democrat, 58 Grassmere Avenue, for a term of 1113 to 1117. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Gribko is here. There he is. I kept looking for behind you. You're right there. Any questions at this point? Any questions on the floor or comments on the floor? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you have anything to say on your behalf? If you do, you have to come to the mic. You're good? All right, thank you, and thank you for your service. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon following appointments. To the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee, Jennifer Browning, unaffiliated, 1197 Mine Hill Road, for a term of November 13 to November 16. Laura Fazano, Republican, 1003 Pequot Avenue, for a term of November 13 to November 16. Jean Finley, unaffiliated, 180 Penfield Road, for a term of November 13 to November 16. And Ellen Gould, unaffiliated, 648 Harbor Road, for a term of 1113 to 1116.
So moved.
Hold on. Michael Jaley, unaffiliated, 128 Wormwood Road, for a term of November 13 to November 16. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Any comments on the floor? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Are any members of the Burr Gardens Committee here? All right, thank you. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon appointment to the Fire Commission, Charlene Lebo, Democrat, 284 Berkeley Road, term November 13 to November 18. May I have a motion to accept? A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I don't see Charlotte. Oh, there she is. Timing. Couldn't be better. Thank you for joining us, Charlene. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Charlene, congratulations. Would you care to say anything?
Very briefly.
Please just come up to the mic.
Well, I want to thank everyone for voting for me on this. It's an honor to serve this dedicated department, and it's really a great experience for me to work with them. So thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon appointment to the Flood and Erosion Control Board, Paul Lindino, Republican, 181 Range Road, term November 13 to November 18. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is Mr. Lindino here? All right. Well, in absentia, congratulations, Mr. Lindino, and thank you for your service. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon an appointment to the Harbor Management Commission. This requires RTM approval. Benjamin Baker, unaffiliated, 174 Old South Road, for a term of November 13 to November 15, as an alternate. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is Mr. Baker here?
No, but he was unable to come because he had a previous...
Thank you. Just for the record, that was Mary Von Kantoff, Chair of the Harbor Commission, speaking on Mr. Baker's behalf. Thank you. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon reappointment to the Historic District Commission. This also requires RTM approval. Phoebe Kahler, unaffiliated, 801 Banks North Road, term 1113 to 1118 as an alternate. And Timothy Smith, unaffiliated, 65 Verna Field Road, for a term of 1113 to 1118. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor? Are Ms. Kahler, Mr. Smith here?
Hi, I'm Phoebe Kahler, sir. Thank you for your...
No, congratulations. Thank you for service. Did you care to say anything on your behalf? All right. No? Thank you. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon appointments to the Human Services Commission, Linda DiLorenzo, unaffiliated, 210 Roland Road, for a term of November 13 through November 17. And Alita Ward, Democrat, 3192 Bronson Road, for a term of November 13 through November 17. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Reverend Ward or DiLorenzo here? Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon reappointments to the Land Acquisition Commission, Victoria Frankenberg, unaffiliated, 149 South Street, for a term November 13 to November 17. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Is Ms. Frankenberg here?
Yes.
Oh, there we are.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for serving. I guess we could say this once and... It just... It's obvious from what we're going through today that Fairfield really runs on volunteer labor, if you will. And this board has commented more than once that we could not pay for the skills that the volunteers that our residents bring to the management of this town and the various boards and commissions. And it... I don't think we can ever say thank you enough for all the time, hours, effort, and skills that are donated to our time. Let's see. Next up, to hear, act, and consider on a reappointment to the Police and Fire Retirement Board, Donald Bowers, Republican, 3247 Redding Road, for a term of November 13 through November 16. And James Takami, Republican, 64 Edgehill Place, for a term of November 13 to November 16. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't see Mr. Bowers or Mr. Takami here. I've served with them both on the pension board. They've done a tremendous job, provided tremendous insight, and have really helped the discussion as we've gone through picking fund managers and making decisions about the fund. Next up, to hear, act, and consider an appointment... Reappointment for the Police Commission, Norma Peterson, Republican, 1061 Galloping Hill Road, term November 13 through November 18. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Norma, congratulations. Did you want to come up and say anything? Norma is way too quiet. For those of you that don't realize it, in addition to her work on the Police Commission, Norma also heads up our CERT program here in town, the volunteers that run the shelter, and played a very big role in our response to Storm Sandy, in helping organize places for people that needed housing, needed shelter during the storm at Ludlow High School. So thank you for your efforts through all of them. Next up, may I have a motion to hear, act, and consider upon the reappointment of our tree warden? May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
That's Mr. Kenneth Placco, for a term of November 13 through November 14. Sorry, I stopped midway through there, guys. Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Cindy, you don't have anything to say about this? The... For the record, that's Cynthia Placco, Ken's wife. All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ken, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Ken, did you have anything you'd like to say here?
Just the fact I really...
Oh, tap, tap, tap. From the mic.
No, I just really want to appreciate the board's help over the years, and you've been great. When things get tough, you're there, and I know you can fall back upon, so... Thank you.
For anyone who doesn't appreciate it, Ken has got one of the toughest jobs in town. All right? If there's a tree that needs to come down or doesn't need to come down, Ken can't win. If he wants to take it down, there's a group of folks that don't want it to come down. If he wants to keep it up, there's a group of folks that say it's got to come down. And we've had a chance to sit through and talk through a number of those occurrences, and it's... Ken, you have one of those jobs that...
No win.
Yeah, you can't win. You know, so we're thrilled that you're accepting the position again.
You don't want it, Mike?
No, thank you. You do it with such skill and verve that I could never compare to that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Again, thank you for your service. All right, next up, to hear, consider, and act upon a reappointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority, Christian Dockham, Democrat, 633 Riverside Drive, for a term November 13 to November 17. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead. My voice is not what it normally is, and so I just say, as Mike did, to thank all of those who've been willing to be reappointed. And I also just want to thank the First Selectman's Office. There's a lot of work that goes into the process from communication with all of those who are going through the reappointment, so I just acknowledge that and also thank everyone as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Dockham, is Mr. Dockham here?
Yes.
Oh, there we are. Good. Thank you. Did you like to say anything at the mic? All right. Well, thank you for your service. All right. Item nine, First Selectment Appointments. This is for information only concerning the Conservation Commission. Appointment of Felicia Watson, Republican, 546 Hoytens Hill Road, for a term of November 13 to November 18. That's to fill a vacancy for Frank Rice, whose term has expired. And let's see. Next up, Appointments. And these are Board of Selectment Approval Appointments. To hear, consider and act upon the following appointments. A, Board of Health. Dr. Henry Yun, unaffiliated, 280 Ryder's Lane, term from November 13 to November 17. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? I think Dr. Yun is not here today, but I had a chance to have a long conversation with him. He's been following, he's well-respected in the health community. He's been attending our Board of Health meetings, and is a great resource. He's new to town. Thrilled to have him here, or new volunteering to town, anyway. And he comes highly respected from the city of Stanford and highly recommended from the city of Stanford for doing that. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointments to the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Richard Machowski, unaffiliated, 241 Colonial Drive, November 9 through November 14. This is to fill a vacancy created by the passing of Dr. Jim Baum. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to have anything to say?
No, just thank you for your support.
Okay. Thank you very much for your volunteering, and again, thanks for taking interest and helping out. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointments. Harbor Management Commission, and this requires the RTM approval. Cheryl Becock, unaffiliated, 68 Dave's Lane, for a term of November 13 through November 17. That's to fill a vacancy for Mary Von Kanta, whose term expired. Mark S. Foster, unaffiliated, 70 Cardinal Hill, term of 1113 to 1117. And that's to fill a vacancy for John Sigmont, whose term expired. And Harry B. French, Republican, 78 Sasko Hill Road, for a term of 1113 to 1117. And that's to fill a vacancy for Louis Schuler, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Though this is a vote for the new members, I also just want, I want to thank them and let them know they have great shoes to fill, as Mary Von Kanta is here and she's done a tremendous job in that role for so many years. So, I wish them well and congratulate them and thank Mary at the same time.
Thank that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. I know Mr. French is here. Mr. Foster or Ms. Becock here? Mr. Foster? All right. Again, congratulations and thank you on your service. Mr. French, Mr. Foster, would either of you care to step to the mic and say a few words? You guys, okay. Would you care to step to the mic and say a few words? You're good?
Thank you.
All right. Again.
Cheryl is unable to come because she had a previous. She's not going to come.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mary. Mary, since you've been so involved in the Harbor Management Commission over the years, do you have anything to add at this time?
I don't think so, Mike.
Okay.
I'd like to thank the support. I would like.
You just need to say it for the mic, Mary.
We've gotten in trouble because I never stop talking. First of all, one of the most wonderful things that's happened to me in this role, actually, I've served on the commission for 16 years and chairman for eight, is to get to know the people who worked for the town of Fairfield. The people who worked for the town of Fairfield, the most amazing people. And I've gone from department to department to department, and every single person has helped me all the way. And in addition to that, the people who've been elected have been very helpful, as they testify. I've been in their offices saying, now, what do I do about this? And it's been a wonderful experience for me. I have a profound respect and love for the town of Fairfield. Thank you very much.
Mary, thank you. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointments to the Land Acquisition Committee. Jay Adams, unaffiliated, 80 Adley Road, term November 13 through November 17, to fill a vacancy for Mary Cody. And Ian Ballen, unaffiliated, 1600 Kings Highway East, term November 13 to November 17, to fill a vacancy for Henry Skiba, whose term expired. And Linda Batchelder, unaffiliated, 175 Shoreham Village Drive, for a term of November 12 to November 16 as an alternate. This is to fill an opening for a member moving to full member. Let's try to see Seal. All right. Democrat, 138 Mona Terrace, for a term November 10 to November 14 as an alternate. And Michael Widmer, Democrat, 279 Brookside Drive, for a term of November 13 through November 17, to fill a vacancy for Gene Connecty, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. I would just point out that two things. One, it's good to see Mr. Seal stepping up and taking interest. Thank you for volunteering, and we've had a chance to work together in town, and I appreciate your volunteering. I know you've got some great background and great skills. And Mr. Widmer, who I appreciate, we had a chance to, again, sit down and have a very good discussion, very impressed with his enthusiasm and his perception of the board, its role, and what it can do, and how important it is to town. So, I just wanted to point those two out. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Congratulations. Now, do I have, let's see. Is Mr. Adams, Mr. Ballen, Ms. Batchelder? Oh, there you are. One, congratulations, and would you like to say anything at the mic?
No.
Okay. Mr. Seal, would you care to say anything?
Okay. Just want to thank you for bringing me up here, and I have served in my local community for 25 years as a resident of Fairfield. But hopefully, with serving on the town, I'll definitely be learning and serving the community, and hopefully, it will be a representation for the minority also.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon appointments to the Parks and Rec Commission. Ms. Doreen Heron, Republican, 53 Forest Avenue, for a term from November 13 to November 18. Ms. Mary Von Kanta, Democrat, from 128 Southport Woods Drive, for a term November 13 through November 18. And Mr. Scott Walker, Republican, 385 Oldfield Road, for a term November 10 through November 15. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I think that your retirement lasted, what, three minutes there? I could do this after Mr. Dignor. I would take this opportunity now to, again, just acknowledge all of the new appointees and thank them, and also to thank all those who have expressed willingness to serve in the town. And I'm incredibly grateful and impressed by the number of people who continue to come forward through the First Selectman's Office and express interest in serving and volunteering. It really is amazing. And as we, in our backup, have resumes and questionnaires, it's the breadth of experience and new energy and insight and experience is just very welcome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ken, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of our volunteers, the reappointees, the new appointees, and the folks who has, as Mr. Tetra and Mrs. McCarthy-Wehhe have said, have stepped up to offer their time, their energy, their talents to our town. And it is because of all of you people volunteering that we have the great town to live in that we have. So, thank you very, very much.
Did we vote on that one yet?
No.
All right. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Congratulations. Ms. Heron, I know. Oh, there we are. Okay. Good. And Mr. Walker? Is he here? There we are. Okay, good. Would either of the three of you, all of the three, care to step up the mic and add any words to the meeting?
Thank you.
We can immortalize you on fair TV, if you realize that. Again, thank you for your service. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon an appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority, Quinn Dignor, a Republican, 15 Barlow Plain Drive, November 13 through November 17. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. I don't see Mr. Dignor here. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right.
Quite a list of people.
It is.
It's amazing.
It is.
I mean, I mean.
It is.
It's incredible. I'm in awe every time we do this.
It's true.
Nick, there are two things. One is that there are more openings. We continue to look at the resumes and things we've received as part of our process. We continue to try to match those up with people that have specified interests to openings we have. But there are more openings coming up on a regular basis. So, to anybody who is interested in being involved or volunteering, please let us know. And you can contact my office, and we will do our best to match you the openings that match your interests. In addition, I do want to point out, and it should be obvious as we've gone through and looked at the, first of all, the political affiliations of people, that we are reaching out to not only the Democrats and Republicans, but also to the unaffiliated. And I know it's been part of an ongoing process from this board, to reach out to people that haven't necessarily been involved in the past, to reach beyond the usual suspects, and to get new blood in, to get new perspectives in, to get new skills in. Because this really is our community, and it only works, as Selectman Kylie said, and referenced by Selectman McCarthy-Wehhe, it only works if we all get involved. It only works if we all contribute. It only works if we contribute our time to literally make it our community and have our viewpoints represented. So, again, thanks to all the volunteers and to all the prospective and future volunteers out there. We look forward to hearing from you. All right. Next up, from the Director of Public Works, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution, resolve that the First Selectman is authorized to negotiate a successor inter-local agreement with other municipalities in the region, subject to approval by the Fairfield Town Attorney, and further resolve that the First Selectman is authorized to enter into negotiations with Wheelbrader Bridgeport to reach a new solid waste disposal agreement. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Bowman, I believe you can fill us in on the details.
Yes, again. Mr. Bowman again?
That's right.
Again, just a little history. The original clause, the opening amendment, in 1988, it expired in 1999. A new commission then was formed, and a new contract was signed. But that commission actually expires.
If I might, in your packets, your handouts, there's a summary PowerPoint slide that might help you follow along with Mr. Bowman's comments.
And when that, this new commission expires, you no longer have a contract with CRA. And we're all, we recommend, and all the towns recommend, if you don't have a contract with CRA, which adds to the cost and is no reason for it at this point. Therefore, that's the reason for a new commission. A new interlocal commission will be the same commission without CRA's participation. The same town as Edison New Town is also. And again, the opportunity here, this contract expires on June 30th, 2014, so we need to get something done now. And it's an opportunity to do two things, is provide a new long-term stability in a solid waste contract for up to 20 years, but also a power purchase agreement. It's potential here to acquire electricity that's being made from our garbage or wheel braver for less than we're paying now. And so, we have, we lose cost of both. This will lower the cost of solid waste disposal and also lower the cost of our electricity. And I think that's pretty important. The point with the power purchase agreement is simply that the wheel braver now is selling their electricity on the wholesale market and really losing money on it. If they sell it to us, they can sell it to us for less than we're paying and more than they're getting, with both benefits. And going forward, the contract would read that every two years, that electric contract would be viewed, and it would be compared to the lowest posted price on state of connect that's PURA, that's a list where you can buy electricity for fixed price for 12 months. It's guaranteed it'll always be lower than that. Yeah, so assuming we can reach a deal on it. We know the solid waste cost of the dominance, just without CRA, that their cost expires, and also because wheel braver has stated that no matter what we negotiate, it will be less than we're paying. So, there's a combination there of great savings. The reason we're proposing to negotiate with wheel braver rather than a competitive bid is that there is no other, no other facility in state of connect that can actually handle bid is that there is no other facility in State of Connecticut that can actually handle this. Our purchasing authority has said this is really a sole source negotiation. All the other plants are filled up, because they've already renewed their contracts for, you know, their contracts have expired. The only other option here is to haul it to a landfill in Pennsylvania, no one wants to do that, and that's an environmental nightmare and a tremendous risk. In the 70s and early 80s, some of the towns running did haul their waste to a landfill while the garbage man was being built, and they're still paying for hazards like so to this day, for their million dollar cost. They don't even have, they don't have to prove that you can cause it, they have, as long as they can show that you're worth your waste, they're your part of the project. Those are just not something you want to do, you don't want all the diesel trucks on the road, there'd be hundreds of trucks every acre traveling back and forth, it just doesn't seem right. Plus, we paid for the time, we should continue to use it. When we do this, we're not only making green power with our solid waste, we're buying it back. So 100% of the town's power, then we'd be green, which is, you know, we have committed to 20%, this would make it 100%, which I think is a pretty good deal. For those reasons, we're looking for the authorization to form a new commission that can commence negotiations with Wheelbrader. I think that might sum to that.
Just to, if I can just summarize where we are, just to declare, one, Ed, you were part of the group that started CRA?
Yes.
All right, so that Ed was there when that was the best deal going, to get us into that, and then, is it 20 years later?
It's now 25 years later.
25 years later, the economics have changed, and Ed is here to, and there's nobody who knows it better, to help us find a better approach. This leads to cheaper costs for our solid waste, cheaper costs for electricity, a sustainable approach, where we're not dumping into a landfill, and minimizing our liability going forward. So I think if that summarizes it, I think that those are the points that really hit me about this, but open it up to discussion for the board. Did we get a first and a second on this, right? So we've had the motion and a second? Thanks, Jen. So open up for discussion.
Yep.
Any comments, questions?
Do you want me to go?
Okay.
Mr. Bowman, thank you for being here, and thank you for bringing forward another environmentally friendly proposal to our board and to our town. I mean, it's amazing the work you've done for us over the years, and, you know, I can't thank you enough. Certainly appreciate the fact that we can have some, you know, environmental sustainability, and we can reduce our cost for electricity and for removal of solid waste. I love all of the aspects of it. My question I have is on the sole source negotiation. I don't know, do we have to look at something for 20 years, or can we look at something for a shorter period of time, or have enough escape clauses in a longer-term contract that wouldn't hurt us today, but would allow us at some point down the road, if there are other options available, or other technologies, or other advances in environmental science, that we would not be locked into something and unable to take advantage of them?
Right. This is basically a 10-year contract with two 5-year renewals, so I think there isn't really, it could be 20 years, as long as 20 years.
Right.
And I think it gets to a long-term, but right now, there is no other technology out there that's commercially viable. They've talked about gasification, they've talked about a lot of things, and that is not commercially viable.
Right.
So we feel comfortable with a 10-year contract on that basis.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, with potential for renewal, unless something better comes along.
Right. And that's a great answer. I guess my contract negotiation question remains, you know, since we don't have a bidding process to go through, or other vendors or suppliers to consider, you know, what can we do to protect ourselves, even within that first 10 years, to potentially take advantage of something else that might pop up? There might be a technology that's not even talked about today, that's available in four or six or eight years, that might make more sense for us. So I'm just trying to leave, you know, life's about having good options, right?
Yeah, yeah. There is nothing in the discussion that would be relevant, basically, that's why the client costs the power to it, you know. No one else is doing this statewide, selling power that they're making.
Right.
So the point is that there could be another technology that develops in five or six years that's commercially viable, but you lose your power contract at that point. You'd be buying power on the commercial market at an extremely more expensive price, so it's, that would be the trade-off there. And there's no guarantees, obviously, that would happen, but that's been the basic negotiation we have, is that's why they want to get it for 10 years. There's the power contract that gives you the little bit of leverage.
Okay.
And it may not, you know, these are very, beginning those, may not actually be constantly the way we think it is, I'm looking back to when in our, they have a competitive situation, but yeah, that would be a landfill. So it's not a good situation.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for anything like that. I'm just advocating for, and maybe it's a question for the Town Attorney or Mr. Tetra, I'm just pointing out, from a contractual negotiation perspective, is, have we looked at everything today to make sure that we have as many options available to us within that 10-year period that could benefit our town?
I think, as I understood the discussion and some of that, Mr. Bowman has been involved in this segment of the industry for literally 25 years or longer, so there literally isn't anybody in the state that has better background in all of that. I think what, your point's well taken, I don't mean, but I think one of the things that, a couple of structural issues, one is there are very few vendors or suppliers, and pretty much all the others are landfill-related?
Yeah, there are other plants like this in Connecticut, they're either smaller or they're filled up.
Right.
And see, that's the, the landfills in Connecticut are getting filled up, at some point, okay. So you're taking it to Pennsylvania, they get filled up, you're now driving in North Dakota. You have that liability string that follows you all the way through.
Right.
Where the economics play out here is you've got a cheaper cost than we're paying now for the solid waste, and you also have the electricity piece, which is one component that is generally not available in this type of thing. See, that doesn't say, Mr. Kylie, that what you're talking about couldn't possibly happen in terms of another technology, but it just narrows the window, both time-wise and cost-wise, that it limits our exposure, because we're winning on both ends now. Typically, somebody would only give us a better rate on solid waste removal if they did, not likely both, and not likely cheaper than both in terms of what we're going. So you're right, nobody can predict the future, nobody can say that something else isn't going to come along and do that, but the, part of, one of the things I found attractive about this is that we have two components that lower costs for the town, so it would take more than just one new technology unless it was substantially better. And at that point, it doesn't look like that's on the horizon in the next few years, let's say. If it came in the next 10, it would narrow the window in terms of what we have. So all that, to me, boils down to the window of exposure in terms of what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, nobody can predict the technology.
Two other things, though, that, this technology is 1940 technology, and all that time, no one's come up with sort of technology. All the other technologies that have been built have failed over time. This particular technology, there's two different types of it, it's the only thing that has worked worldwide. They're building in China and Europe now, they're going back to building these. Wheelbrader's building five in China, two in England, one in Amsterdam, they're building in Canada now, because after all this time they have, you have to find anything that works as good as this technology. The second part is that if that, if new technology did come about, the time it goes from the lab to commercial, it's like five years. The time you get to negotiate another contract is two or three years. So that's almost 10 years, you know?
Yeah.
So that's the thing, if something came along, it would just write at the time, and then again, you figure, where's it going to go? Who's going to, where are you going to fill it?
Sorry.
I think 10 years is really, it's a short-term, and it's kind of a contract.
No, thank you for that, and thank you for your explanations. Appreciate it.
I wondered if you could just take a step back, and I say, sometimes to the fourth-grade level, since there are people who sometimes watch from home, and also, you know, for the rest of new elected officials, or just folks who don't know, just the basics of what this contract covers, the difference between the commercial haulers and what goes here versus going down to the transfer station here.
There is one thing I have to correct, it says, don't, the car is delivered with commercial waste, that's not true, a commercial waste would be delivered as long as a residential. And when I did my editing, I forgot to take that out, so all the waste can be delivered there.
Okay.
We'll go to our transfer station here, and we haul to Bridgeport, then when it goes into that facility, it's called a mass burn facility, it doesn't need to be processed, it's just dumped into a pit, loaded by a crane, and put on a series of rolling grates, where a temperature of, minimum temperature of 1,500 is maintained, up to 3,000 degrees. What comes out the other end, then, is just ash. They then take the, whatever iron metals in the ash are separated before it's landfilled. So you're going from one ton of garbage to about 100 pounds of solid waste. You're going from something from one cubic yard to like, less than 90% of that cubic yard. And it's one of the safest burn technologies, what's coming out of that stack is cleaner than any other stack in the State of Connecticut. These facilities are much cleaner than power company facilities. They have an enormous amount of protection, it's called continuous emission monitors. It monitors nitrogen dioxides, sulfur dioxide, you name it, about 15 separate things. And if it exceeds the primitive level, it triggers an alarm. If it exceeds it for more than a certain period of time, it shuts the plant down. It's all automatic. There's an afterburn here, if the temperature drops below a certain level, which could trigger the oxygen, it heats the thing up, and so it doesn't. The stack temperature drops, because the dioxide can be burned and reformed, and then heats it up, so it isn't reformed. It's a tremendous environmental protection, that's why it's green power, you know. 20 years ago, people didn't look at that one, now it's classic two, green power in State of Connecticut and all over the country. So it's a very simple process, and the way it works so well is there are no moving parts. It's not ground shred, there are no conveyor belts, you just dump it into a pit and it burns. It's the simplest thing in the world, and that's why no one's been able to improve on it. Now, they look at more and more recycling, yes, and the contract is, any recycling we do is fine, they're not going to try to make us commit the delivering, or pay a penalty for recycling. So if food waste recycling comes into play, there's no penalty. If we, at our site, if we save another million kilowatt hours, there's no penalty. If we build a new school in Athens, a kilowatt hour, so, you know, penalty also. So it seems that, you know, surrounded the problem fairly well.
Thank you for that. I think that's phenomenal, because one thing that I often hear people talking about is the concerns about the environment and burning, and I think that's very helpful for people to be aware and reminded of. The other thing that you mentioned was the recycling, and that we won't be penalized in any way, we wouldn't be. Are there any, on the other side, any incentives in terms of recycling for us?
Oh, yeah, with the single screen recycling. You know, we're getting paid for single screen recycling, we're paying $60, $70 a ton to get rid of it, so the more we can recycle, obviously, the more money we save.
Yeah, just, that's a separate program, it's not tied into this agreement, but your point's well taken.
No.
Right.
There's no penalty if we do it, that's right.
Right, and that's important. I think that's critical to me. You mentioned food waste, which is a very hefty percentage, surprisingly so, and I think that, again, that's an example of your forward thinking, and I appreciate your educating us. I've even learned more today, too, so thank you.
Also, a point I want to remind you, there was another very fine Bridgeport, the first one we built in the 70s, that technology failed, it never worked. It's like $40 million, but, you know, it was guaranteed by a company, and they had back, and they paid it off, and there was no public debt, and that was, you know, more grinding shredding, it just didn't work. That's why everybody's starting to go back to the old technologies that worked, and nothing's changed, and 30 years now, it's still the same.
Kevin, any further comments or questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Bowman.
All right, okay, the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board.
Mike. Thanks.
Mr. Zimbruski, want to thank you for coming today. Did you have anything to add to our presentation here? If you do, you need to do it from up here. This is all a ploy to get you on camera.
No hiding.
Thank you.
Mike Zimbruski, Director of Solid Waste Protection. Just by not dealing with CRA right off the bat, I was going to save us $105,000 in my budget, just from an administrative fee.
No value added there.
And my support, I've been dealing with that and working with that on a weekly basis, you know, my support.
Okay, good, thank you. Any further comments here?
Thanks, Mike.
All right, are we ready to vote?
I am.
Ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Now, this will be going to the RTM most likely in January?
I won't be here.
Okay.
When is it to decide?
Originally, we thought it was December, but it's delayed, so something else I have to carry on.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
All right. I know it.
All right.
Oh, number 12.
And again, Mr. Bowman, thank you, Mr. Zimbruski, thank you. Mr. Digner?
Yes.
You've joined us. On one hand, you've been appointed, so it's too late to protest.
You're in.
We want to say officially, thank you, and give you an opportunity to say anything at the mic if you'd like to.
At this point in time, I don't think I can say anything.
Okay, well, again, thank you for your service, thank you for volunteering for the town. Do you have anything to add?
Good.
Okay. Next up, from the First Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen meeting dates for the calendar year 2014, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion or questions? So you can see, we moved the January 1st date already.
I saw that, yep.
Jen, did we make any other adjustments on these dates?
I don't believe so, but I'm not completely sure.
Kristen?
The April meeting was, second meeting was moved, accommodate the spring break, I believe.
Which one was that?
The April.
April.
Okay, so that's why it's 22 days, is what you're saying?
Yes. Twenty.
Oh, I see.
So April, the spring break would come in the middle of the month?
It would have been the 16th if we were on cadence.
Right.
I see, okay, I got it. The only comment I would ask is that we've had email traffic with Jen, the calendars, and since it's quite a waste with summer and summer vacations, I have no idea when things could be planned, so we'll just tackle that as it comes.
Yes, we have, that's okay.
That's great.
As we get closer, all right.
Works for me as well.
Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to accept?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. First Selectman Budget Meetings for Calendar Year 2014. The, we've put these on here, I guess we should take a motion to accept these, we're really doing these as joint meetings with the Board of Finance, we're already ex officio members of the board, so we generally don't have a separate Board of Selectmen meeting with minutes, et cetera, for that.
Right.
So I guess we can take these as for information only, unless you all feel that we should vote on those. We do have Item B, we do have Board of Selectmen Public Executive Budget Session comments, so we should probably vote on Item B, unless you want to vote on, I'm neutral on A, since we don't record those as separate meetings, we do participate as members of the Board of Finance, so any preference?
Just vote on B.
All right. Then may I have a motion to accept Item B dates as presented?
So moved.
A second? All right, thank you, Kristen. Any discussion on those? I would point out, and we should probably mention here, as briefly discussed ahead of time, at your request, I'll be taking those dates up for a year from now, with the Board of Finance, to, since the Board of Ed voted last night to schedule April break, when we would normally be having the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen final deliberations and vote sessions, and we can't really move those deeper into April.
No, we can't.
Because we have the RTM to get through, so, and it's hard to move them up closer into March, because we have the budget sessions on those, so we will find a resolution, but I think these dates here identify what the problem is. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tax Collector, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the Tax Collector in the amount recommended.
So moved.
A second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Kylie?
I move to amend Item 14, to remove the period after the word recommended.
Yep.
Add a comma, a space, and the amount of $7,410.33.
Is there a second? All right, any further discussion on the amendment? An amendment only? The public?